Good evening, if we could all make sure our mics are turned on. Go ahead and start with our invocation of Pastor Clark, would you be so kind, sir?
Hello, everybody, we're so thankful for the opportunity to live in this community. Thankful for the city staff, for the firefighters, the police officers, and the city council board. And thankful for the blessings that you've given us here. We're afraid of night that you will give the council wisdom, make the decisions that are best for the community. Praise and thank you to this, in your son's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is six thirty-two, we'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Lowell City Council to order. Ms. Liz, if you do a roll call, please.
Adrian Flores.
Here.
Emily Reach.
Here.
Steve Whitehead.
Here.
Eric Shine.
Here.
Lisa DeGifford.
Here.
Scott Mendonnum. Absent. Roy Brunson.
Here.
And Bryant Sands.
Here.
We have quorum.
Next item is the consent agenda. In your packet you'll find the Lowell City Council minute, regular minutes from September, and the financial statement from September twenty twenty-five. Are you entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Yes.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
Emily Reach.
Yes.
Um, motion to approve, the consent agenda has been approved.
Next item is for the fire department. Chief Hawkins.
Good evening. Tonight we're going to have captain's promotion for the fire department. I want to read a little comment about what it means to be a fire department captain. A fire department captain is responsible for supervising fire company or stations, ensuring operational readiness, safety, and efficiency during emergency responses. Captains lead crews during firefighting, rescue, medical incidents, make tactical decisions in coordinating efforts on scene. They also manage daily station activities, training, and administrative duties. As seasoned professionals, captains mentor junior personnel, enforce department policies, and serve as key communicators between firefighters and command staff. Tonight we proudly recognize firefighter, paramedic Dakota Stacy. He is promoted to captain with Lowell Fire Department. Dakota began his service with Lowell in twenty eighteen, and has since dedicated nearly eight years protecting, serving, and caring for the local community. Over the years, he has proven himself to be a dependable leader and skill provider, serving in multiple roles including firefighter, paramedic, and acting captain. Beyond his fire service, Dakota also served as a nurse in both emergency room and in intensive care units at local hospitals. Continuing his passion for helping others, he combined his experience in fire EMS and nursing, and has made him a valuable asset to the department and trusted resource among his peers. Throughout his career, Dakota has helped strengthen our department through his commitment to training, development, and high standards in patient care. He helped establish the department's paramedic program, advanced our ALS equipment in partnership with battalion chief Luke Bohan, and our medical director representing Lowell and Northwest Arkansas, with Northwest Arkansas on the Metro Protocol Committee to help shape the regional EMS standards. Raised by his grandparents Boyd and Cheryl in Lowell, Dakota carries forward the work ethic and community pride they instilled in. He currently lives in Northwest Arkansas with his wife Anna and their three dogs. Outside of work, Dakota enjoys hiking, spending time on the lake, attending concerts, and being surrounded by friends and family. His personal motto, "Failure is not an option," captures his determination both on and off duty. It's the same integrity and drive that have earned him the respect of his colleagues and confidence in this department. I'd like to ask Captain Stacy to come forward with his wife Anna. Please join us in congratulating Captain Dakota Stacy on this well-deserved promotion.
Mayor, there's something on your agenda is a public forum and you'd receive any... I like it better off. And you receive anyone who would like to make comments to the city council?
There's an open public forum at eighteen thirty-eight, six thirty-eight.
Seeing none, mayor. There's no old business, the next item is a new business. It's a resolution adopting artificial intelligence policy for the city of Lowell, Arkansas, in compliance with Act eight forty-eight of twenty twenty-five and further purposes, and you'd receive a motion.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
The, uh, the policy as it's in our packet is that adopting what the state is doing or municipal league suggestion?
It brings us into compliance with Act eight forty-eight and is, uh, what the municipal league provided to ensure that we are in compliance with Act eight four eight.
And if we I think we've talked about this a number of times in council is that if we want to adopt this for now and make changes to it later, that's always at our discretion.
We can become more restrictive, we just cannot be less restrictive than Act eight four eight.
Okay, and more restrictive is what I was thinking.
Yes, sir.
I was kind of wanting to see if we could table this item and do like a work session to kind of get some of it together. I feel like it's a little bit, um, broad, and just kind of work on some of the specifics of what we want in there, if that's possible.
We will stay, uh, out of compliance with the state act at that point.
I mean, are we able to do like a work session?
We can do a work session after to be more restrictive, but we need the, um, resolution in place to be compliant with the state law.
Well, I understand that, was there like a specific date that it had to be compliant with?
We're past that date at this point, it's already a state law, that's why the municipal league, uh, brought this out.
When were we supposed to have had it done?
This, you know, the state law went into effect in August, and it doesn't really have, it just says have one. My guess is that the state agencies are all sort of getting theirs put together about the same time right now, but I think everyone's getting them done.
So if we're already out of compliance, um, is it an issue for like two weeks extra out of compliance, just to...
If we tabled it tonight, the soonest we could address it would be next month, not two weeks.
Happy to bring this resolution back up again with more restrictions if you'd like them, but, um, I'd need to know what those restrictions would be, and we'd have to get that passed by both legal counsel and municipal league to ensure we are not in violation of eight four eight.
So any shifts and pivots have to go back to through two rounds of approvals before we can even vote back on it, right? That's what it sounds like. Like, say we passed it, and then we're like, hey, we want to adjust this because it's too vague or it's too broad or whatever, and we had a working session, come back, then we would have to put in what we think is right. Tom then has to look at it, he has to approve it, and then it has to go to the municipal league, they have to approve it.
I think Tom would go through municipal league to ensure that, um, it gets in compliance with what they feel and what the state, so there would be, I mean, municipal league is just a go-between, between, um, us and the state on this. So they've worked with the state legislative branch to determine, and that's why we have the sample resolution in front of you is through their work with our legislators.
Makes sense.
Can we not do a work session?
Absolutely. I'm sorry?
Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I think that's, that's correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Flores?
Uh, can we not do a work session outside of, of the regular meetings? So say do one in, say, two weeks instead of at the next meeting?
Well, we can't pass it until another meeting. So like, we'd have to pass today, have a working session with, on the record saying that we're gonna have a working session, then we wouldn't have to vote again until November. If we don't pass it tonight, then we're out of compliance, what is the, what happens if we're out of compliance?
I don't know yet.
Honestly, it wouldn't hurt, it's a resolution, which is nice, it's easy to change, because resolutions are changed by resolution, right? You don't have to have the readings and the requirement, and such things and rules. Y'all can certainly pass it to, tonight and make changes to it, um, as you go along or as things occur to y'all, because it would be, it'd be easy to change, um, if you need to, but it probably wouldn't hurt to get it on the books tonight, uh, just so you're there. Say, the way the state has been enforcing its mandates lately has been things like withholding turnback funds and such. Now, I'm not saying they did that with this one, but they have been doing that with the water audit, you know, and that's really, really sent reverberations around the state.
But they haven't given a deadline that we have to have this in place by this date.
Like, what's the grace period?
They haven't really given us a grace period, they just said it was a law and it needed to be passed.
Grace is the...
I mean, it, it's a lot to absorb. It was a lot to absorb in the short amount of time that, you know, we had to read this.
I'll just add that anything IT-related, cybersecurity-related, that the city is involved with or the city is enacting to protect itself, we're gonna be making changes to those ongoing. As the bad actors do more, we're going to have to do more to combat that. Whether that's getting restrictive with access, getting restrictive with policies, educating ourselves, educating staff, it's going to be ongoing from now forward. So, I personally don't see a problem with what's written as a starting point. And then I, I agree with several others that we probably need to do a working session to kind of restrict it down a little bit, and that's our new starting point. And then, how long is it gonna have to be before we address it again? And I just think it's gonna have to be an ongoing thing. So if we, if we delay by a month, then now we're a month behind.
To answer your question, sir, um, Arkansas Department of Public Safety, they, they manage all of IT, um, as it comes from the city's standpoint. So we follow their lead on what, um, we are allowed and not allowed to do, and what parameters we have to follow.
But like in our house, this, in Lowell, who, like, is it the expectation that you are the one following up on all of these things within the compliance?
No, the state doesn't complete audit on us.
Okay.
So they determine.
What does that entail?
It's a very invasive, comprehensive exam through active directory, um, our switches, our servers, to ensure all firmware, BIOS, and, uh, active directory group policies are involved with. Passwords, uh, switches, and servers with, in dealing with their warranty and our turnaround in case of a catastrophe. So, anything from software, uh, which we have to buy from a government vendor, to equipment that we have to ensure that we buy from a US manufacturer is all regulated through the Department of Public Safety.
And this policy you said was given to us by the municipal league?
It was given to us, uh, through coordination with Department of Public Safety and the Arkansas legislative body.
Because I noticed like the, where is it at? The policy about who, oh my word, sorry. Is it like someone violated this policy, report it to, and that's left blank, who would we be reporting?
Uh, that would be reported to me, and I am required to report it to the state.
Is that like across the board through every city and stuff, or do, would that be referred?
Across the board for every city, county.
So it wouldn't be like HR or anything like that?
No, a violation of IT policy, uh, if it is in a category that is reportable, which, um, everything is in a different category. Whether we can deal with it in-house or if it has to be reported to the state, um, we follow those rules.
Is there any significance to the blue highlighted sections in twelve? I know one of them was just mentioned, but is there any significance to that?
Those are areas that we, we will fill in, and there's no significance to them. It's just a matter of, any kind of, uh, intrusion has to be immediately reported within, I think, four hours, anything beyond that, I have eight hours. I have seventy-two hours to bring anything that's down back up. Um, and everything is reportable to either a state or a federal agency.
So what it mentions in here about the training, who is verifying the...
State auditor verifies all that, there's logs for everything.
And just...
No, you go right ahead.
Just to be sure, this was drafted at the state level or at the local level?
Oh, that wasn't done at the local, that was done at the state level.
Okay.
Because I know when I read the, I'm so sorry. I know when I read the, um, Arkansas bill situation, it, it's not primarily just for, um, corporations and business and workplace environments, but it's, it's focused primarily, it, it seems to be focused more towards that. So I just wanted to make sure that whatever we are agreeing to, signing off on, is something that's a little more, well, a little less broad, but also just, it's covering everybody, because, I mean, AI is still like the Wild West right now. It changes all the time, and that goes to what you're saying. I mean, we would have to be doing at least yearly minimum check-ins, if not more than that. I mean, we used to be able to tell AI videos by certain features, and now it's getting harder to tell. So I just want to make sure, that's why I wanted to do a work session.
The only AI that's used right now is by city staff, and that is for, uh, their code compliance and building, and through community development. It's through Ideal, I believe is their name, is that right Karen? Um, and that is so that, uh, it'll come up as a platform on our webpage at some point. So people, if they have a question regarding our municipal code, building code, they can ask a question, and it'll provide them an answer. Outside of that, uh, no other AI sources are being used, and that source is actually used by several other cities as well, and is compliant by eight four eight. Ordinal.
I mean, as long as we're willing to go back and put in proper parameters, because I know some of this read a little weird for like elected officials and stuff like that versus city employees or what, that, that's my big...
There are different reporting mechanisms for elected officials versus, uh, city employees. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Yes.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
Emily Reach.
Yes.
Motion to approve, the resolution is approved. It is assigned number twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Mayor, next on the agenda is a resolution to appropriate funds and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Marmac Fire and Safety in order to repair and replace the fire alarm system in the city of Lowell City Hall. You'd receive a motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Is the, um, fire suppression system, is it out of date or damaged?
It is a, a fire alarm system, and it is both out of date and damaged.
Okay.
How is it damaged?
There are several sensors that are in op and cannot be, uh, trouble shot, so the recommendation was to replace the panel versus trying to figure out how to repair it, especially since it's out of date.
Did we get quotes from different companies as well?
Where... Hey, you want to answer that, sir?
Hold the question, I'm sorry, I hear you.
Uh, did we get com, uh, quotes from different companies, make sure we got the best deal on this?
No, the quote came from the company that currently services. We have an annual service contract with them, they service all the buildings in Lowell.
Okay.
And, uh, we attempted to replace some of the sensor heads. They're no longer manufactured, therefore no longer available. And they said that if we act within a reasonable amount of time, we can at least use the wiring that's in the building and only replace all of the sensor heads, pool stations, control panel, and scrubs. If we wait until this cycle is gone, then we'll have to replace all the wiring in the building at a much greater cost than just replacing all the central...
Okay. And the, the cycle, what, what is that, just...
Every, uh, there is a, whenever manufacturers design and create software to work with... For example, the smoke detectors in this building now are talking to the control panel. Or they were until eight o'clock this morning when I turned them off. If they stop talking to the control panel, the control panel constantly sends out a trouble alarm, which is constant beeping in this building that you don't want to be in here listening to, okay? And it's all because it's trying to tell us that there's not fire, but it can't communicate with the sensors because they're no longer functioning. So we had several of those sensors going down, and they're going down more and more and more every day. So less of the building is actually being protected, and all of us were having to listen to the constant beeping and go reset the panels.
Okay.
The only decision we had was to go with a new system.
Okay.
Roll call.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Yes.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Uh, Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
And Emily Reach.
Yes.
Motion to approve, this, uh, resolution is approved. Resolution is assigned twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, excuse me. Misspoke.
Mayor, next on the agenda is a resolution to appropriate funds and authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Crafton Toll and Associates Incorporated. For the Highway two sixty-five Monroe Avenue intersection improvements project in City of Lowell, Arkansas, and you'd receive a motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Have we gotten other bids from other...
I'll answer this. It's illegal to do so, so no, we have not. You cannot, uh, get bids on professional services from engineering firms. Um, so we select two firms, um, Crafton Toll and McClellan Engineering. Um, and McCrafton Toll has, uh, was next up on a project since McClellan had received the last two or three.
Okay, so we just go back and forth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Tell a funny story about that.
Will, um... I, I may be getting ahead, but will, will that be a roundabout at that intersection?
That is what is to be determined, uh, with this agreement, is what will we be allowed to put in or what will work based upon what our needs are and what the state will allow.
Now, going back to the illegal part, what, what makes it illegal? Is it, um, that it's a state level?
I've been dying to tell a funny story about this. I have a funny story about that.
Okay.
So I'm a baby, baby, baby lawyer, I'm like this big. And I'm working at the municipal league, giving my first year, and, uh, a mayor calls me from somewhere in the state and says, "I'm really tired of, you know, paying these engineers, I, I want to take bids." And so I look it up, and it says, you know, um, says, "You shall not take bids for professional services like engineering, um, accounting, uh, surveying, attorneys, there's a few others." And the idea is you have to do this request for qualifications. You get qualifications in, and then you compare them, and then you negotiate with the one that you choose, and if you can't reach a deal, you go to the next one. But there's not allowed to be bidding. And so I said, "Well, we'll just change that, mayor, I'll, I'll go to my boss, and let's say a session's right, going on right now." So I took out the word "shall," and I put in the word "may," and he looked at it, and he just laughed, and he goes, "You want to run this?" And I said, "Well, yes, sir." He said, "Okay, we'll go ahead and file it," and he got someone to file it. And about three days later, he said, "Hey, Tom, my boss," he said, "There's some gentleman wanted to talk to you in the conference room upstairs." And I said, "Okay, I'll run up there, you know, pack my tie," and there's like these nine engineers, like the, the leading engineers in the state, and they're all like nine feet tall and have square jaws and are wearing, you know, pens in their pockets. And they go, "Are you the one that replaced the word 'shall' with 'may'?" And I'm like, "Well, yeah." And then for the next hour or so, they explained to me very clearly how that's never going to happen. And of course, it didn't happen, but, um, the idea is when you're trying to get professional services as opposed to trying to maybe say pave the street, professionals just don't believe you can compare apples to apples by price. They think that you should think about qualifications and what you need and that, and relationships and such. And so we are still at the point where you're not allowed to have bidding for engineering services, legal services, accounting services. You have to do this other method, so that's where we are.
And that's illegal at the state level or...
It's a state law.
State law, okay.
The state, yeah, state law for cities and counties in Arkansas. You can't, you can take bids for things like cars, no. Again, like doing streets and such, you just can't take bids for professional services.
Professional services, okay. So you can take bids for, uh, what was it, the other term, professional services and also, and then...
You know, commodities. You bid for commodities, you bid for, you know, things like automobiles, you know, asphalt. Or you might be buying sod, you might buy, you know, other materials. Of course, for cars, we, we try to buy through the state bidding system, so we don't have to take bids. The state gets the best deal for you for a year, and then you can use that without going through the bidding process. The state gets the best deal for you for a year and then you can use that without going through the bidding process.
Okay.
I thought it was a funny story.
It was. You told it a few times now, so.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Senior Rockwell.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Yes.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
Emily Reach.
Yes.
Motion to approve. This resolution is approved. It is given number twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
Mayor, next on the agenda is a resolution to appropriate funds and authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Crafton Toll Associates for Oakwood Avenue Trail Connection project in the city of Lowell, Arkansas, and you'd receive a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
Discussion?
I do have questions. Get to my picture. So obviously on the side that Goat Springs is, there's trail there. You want to bring a trail over the interstate and then it's just going to stop because we don't have anything on Dixieland.
This is the first part of a process to determine what, if any, access we can bring across that intersection and try to bring trail access to that area of Lowell.
So if this is just a site, if we can even do it?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Okay.
There is the Dixieland Master Street plan.
Mm-hmm.
A portion of it is constructed in front of our.
So Karen, if I'm understanding, as Dixieland continues to develop, part of that development would be to add trail? Thank you. Trail and sidewalk, I'm guessing?
This is what the Master Street plan calls for. If there's no trail section placed on that property, they didn't reset.
Okay.
Did notice, is it Car Mart or Car Max, whatever, they have the fairly large sidewalk in front of them. Like it's part of a trail, but it's literally only that spot. So are they just waiting for us to connect?
I believe Rogers required them to build their frontage and as other development happens, those frontages.
Will have to build it, okay.
Unless the city takes it upon itself to do the, the work itself. Any further discussion? Senior Rockwell?
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Yes.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
And Emily Reach.
Yes.
Motion to approve. The resolution is approved. Resolution is assigned number twenty-five dash forty.
Should be twenty-nine, thirty-seven, forty-eight.
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine, forty.
Mayor, next on the agenda is a resolution appropriating funds to resolve existing litigation and you'd receive a motion.
So moved.
Flag it.
Discussion?
I thought that municipal league was going to be covering some of this. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So this is after municipal league is covered?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, go ahead. So Mayor and Council, I was given a letter by our attorney, Sarah Monahan at municipal league to read to the council. So if you'll indulge that. So today's date, the twenty-first of October, this statement provides an official update on the civil case, Christopher Collins for the city of Lowell, which is ongoing in the United States District Court in the Western District of Arkansas, to Fayetteville. It provides a brief overview of the case, trial outcome, post-trial developments, and proposed settlement for the council's consideration approval. The former lieutenant Christopher Collins filed suit against the city claiming two constitutional violations under the Arkansas Constitution and a claim for federal Family Medical Leave Act violations. City Attorney Tom Kiklak and Mayor Moore submitted the case through the Arkansas Municipal League's Legal Defense Program Portal. Throughout litigation, the city's been represented by Sarah Monahan, senior litigation counsel at the municipal league. On May one twenty-five, the court granted summary judgment in favor of the city for the constitutional claims, dismissing them with prejudice, but allowed the FMLA claim to continue to trial. A jury trial was held on August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, resulted in a verdict for Collins on his FMLA discrimination retaliation claim, awarding damages of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars thirteen cents in back pay. Following the trial, the court entered an order on August twenty-seventh permitting Collins to file for attorney's fees and costs. Following the verdict, Collins pursued additional post-trial motions for further damages, including liquidated damages. Interest on the back pay, attorney's fees and court costs, instead of continuing litigation, Ms. Monahan and Collins counsel engaged in negotiations. Collins ultimately agreed to withdraw his request for front pay in exchange for a comprehensive settlement. The proposed total settlement is approximately one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars ninety-eight cents for the breakdown, including the jury awarded back pay, liquidated damages, attorney's fees, court costs, and accrued interest. The municipal league defense program through the municipal league will pay, will cover fifty percent of the settlement. The city of Lowell responsible for the remaining fifty percent. As such, Ms. Monahan requests that the city council approve the proposed settlement agreement. Approving it will avoid further litigation over fees and bring closure to the matter in a fiscally responsible manner. While Ms. Monahan maintains the city did not violate Collins' FMLA rights, the litigation highlights an opportunity to improve city's compliance with FMLA notice and procedural rules, strengthen practices and reduce future risks. It's recommended the city take following actions, review the FMLA notice documentation procedures across all departments, ensure consistent enforcement and proper notification procedures by department heads and human resources staff. There's also a breakdown chart that has different components. It doesn't read very well, but they add up to the one eighty-seven, seven thirteen. I shouldn't say it doesn't read well. It's just numbers and, and categories. But it all adds up to the one eighty-seven, seven thirteen, ninety-eight, of which the municipal league is responsible for half. Letter doesn't mention, but that's because the category of the case is an employment case. Employment cases are fifty-fifty. That is, municipal league will pay fifty and the city pays fifty. The idea being if the league covered ninety percent, people might not be very careful about their employment decisions as they should be. Whereas a police misconduct case is a ninety percent covered by the municipal league, just in case that ever should come up and you guys have any confusion about that. But that ends the letter. Mayor.
Question on regarding as far as funding, I'm assuming this is out of, will be out of the general reserve? Where will this be funded out of? Do we know?
It'll be general reserve.
General reserve. One other question, just where it starts. I know we had some discussions several months ago about looking at bringing on an HR person for the city. What's the latest or what's the status on that?
A job offer was presented and accepted. I believe she'll start in the next week. Or give or take a couple days. The thirtieth.
Thirtieth, okay, thank you.
Mr.? Any further discussion? Senior Rockwell?
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Yes.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
Emily Reach.
Yes.
Motion to approve. This resolution is approved. Resolution is assigned number twenty-five dash forty-one.
Mayor, next on the agenda is announcements and discussions, the first of which is the Lowell Trash Service.
Jimmy? Trash Service.
As y'all know, the contract is coming up with the trash service, uh, going to be exact date, I think it's in June of next year. Ms. Melanie's been called, getting calls about the prices of trash, believe it or not. So I've been out doing a little research and trying to see, get ahead of the ballgame. If, if y'all know, if we put this out to bid, y'all not going to get nowhere near the same price you're getting now. So I worked with this contract y'all got now with LRS, talked to them. They have agreed for it will extend the contract with them for another three years. They will not raise the rates at all for one full year. They, they will eat the cost of the landfill, you know, going up right now. The landfill rates are just going out. He told me they raised theirs eighteen percent this year and they, they're sorting the cost right now, but I'm just like, you know, if we go out to contract, y'all can call back soon. The trash is going to get high. So just, just for thoughts, I guess, don't have to make agreement unless y'all want me to tell them, yes, it's a done deal. But anyway, if you give them another three years, they'll hold it for the same price.
Do you know, do you know if LRS is covering any other cities?
Oh yeah, they cover other cities. I don't, I mean, I see them all over the place. I don't want to. Actually, I think Rogers, they got Rogers and Rogers. So they, they got more cities than just Lowell.
So what's council's prerogative, I guess, on this? Do I need to pursue this further or do we want to take the chance and put it out for bid and be surprised?
I feel like we're going to get the good with the bad. We've went around, down this road once before. People were upset when we changed our trash company last time. And I mean, every trash company that we've had, well, we had Waste Management, we have LRS, they all have issues. I mean, they show up when they show up, you know, they break trash cans, but it's no different from Waste Management to LRS. I can't say that one was any better than the other, to be perfectly honest with you. So if this means for another year not having my trash rates go up, I'm more sticking with them.
How long, how long we been with them? We in our third year now? We know?
My fourth year going on this contract.
Yeah.
Okay. Has there been any major complaints?
Always.
There's.
Her phone rings on that, I don't know any major one. You're going to get your individuals that always does complain if I, as Lisa says.
Roy, my wife complains every, every time she has to pay the bill because it keeps going up. But to Jimmy's point, if we put it out for bid again, it's likely to double. Well, that's, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's. So yeah, my wife complains. I mean, if we, I mean, for consistency's sake, I mean, that's where I'm leaning for consistency's sake in a year of knowing that we'll hold the rate. Now, there's no telling where the rate's going to go after that. There's just like, there's no telling what bids we're going to get back either. But I think from a consistency's sake, I'm, I lean toward let's stay the course right now. I know personally, I can only speak from personal, I have no problem with them, so.
I know when, when they first started their contract with us, we had a lot of complaints because they weren't dropping off the trash cans, you know, and people had issues with that.
Yeah, it took a while for this to work over.
Biggest issue now is, and I know they've gotten a lot better, their communication, like if there's a weather. They, they've been really good in this last year about putting notices out that, you know, there's inclement weather, there's ice on the road, we're not going to pick up. You're going to always have those people that complain, but.
Jimmy, do you know, or Melanie, either one, we signed a contract with Orion, Orion got bought by LRS or they changed their name, one of the two. Has it gotten any better as LRS versus Orion?
I, well, since I've been got a little more involved in here just lately, got to know, which I know the people already of when I used to be in it before I come to city, got to know them now. I think it's got better. I mean, I know directly, I can call, direct people and get a little more communication than where most people call. You get that computer and you have to punch one for English and two for all this stuff, so, but.
I, I agree with Lisa that the biggest issue with Orion was switching over from Waste Management to Orion and then it wasn't very long before LRS stepped in and bought them out, so.
I guess, let y'all imagine that, that's a cutthroat business. I mean, they could sell out.
Yeah, right. I, I tend to agree with Roy and the only thing I don't know is if we have to do that in the form of a resolution next month or do we, or next months before June, or do we decide it now?
And I think that if they probably want an indication of what the council would do.
Yeah, they can't put an indication because that way they can set up to know, you know.
You know, and then.
They don't want to sit here until May and then let's sign the contract and then they.
I'd like to look at it and then we'll, if we need to bring something back to the city council, we'll do that at the next meeting. But I think they probably just want an indication.
Just in writing, bring back, they'll hope.
Probably, maybe a vote to give you, your permission to go forward, you know.
I would say I would like to go forward with LRS.
I agree.
Yeah, I think no matter what, it's a trashy situation if we just.
It is. But I will have something in writing for the mayor and for y'all for next city council, just so y'all can see it in writing.
Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Chief Cuth? Your, the next item?
Yeah, as you know, we're getting really crowded at the Lowell Police Department. The city's never bought or designed a police department. And so we've been looking at a building, looking at two buildings. One would be for City Hall and Court. The other one would be for the Police Department. Both of the buildings are about twenty-four thousand square feet each, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand. It's almost on four acres behind O'Reilly's. You know, the two buildings, they used to be a trans place, they're one story. The east building is actually really perfect security-wise for a police department. And it's one thing, of course, it'll take a little bit, but it's, it's well done for a police department. I've talked to a few of you about it already and would like to tour it with you if you, if you get an opportunity. But my announcement is I'd really like to take a look at these buildings for the city.
And we're looking at both of those?
I'm sorry.
Are we looking at both of those single-story buildings behind O'Reilly?
Yes, that is the, that's the idea.
Yeah, I heard you say for City Hall and Police?
Yeah, City Hall would be in, I mean, we're busting at the seams everywhere. City Hall would be in, in part of it and Court would either take a third or a half, but there's so many parking places over there for us, we just can't fit here anymore. It just, it's not working. But the east building is actually well done for security because of the data center that was inside. So that, that really can double as like a, a dispatch as well as it's got some storm features as well, so.
It's funny, I used to work in the east, in the, I'm sorry, yeah, the east building, JB Hunt.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
And we'll have to do a good inspection for snakes in the ceiling.
Thank you, that's good.
Because every once in a while, one would just fall down.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
How much are we looking at?
I believe it's one forty-five, one hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot.
One forty-two, I believe.
One, one forty-two, which is, you know, twenty-three thousand square feet per each building. That's six million dollars. You couldn't build residential for a hundred and forty-two dollars a square foot. If you wanted to build a professional police department, that'd be about five hundred to seven hundred dollars a square foot. And it wouldn't be big enough for us to even stay in it for five years. So that's why we're looking at this building, or these two buildings, actually.
The two buildings together is six million?
Yes, they were actually getting higher offers, but.
Is that inclusive of the upgrades that we'll need to do?
No.
Do we know what that's going to cost? Rough number, rough estimate?
For the police department, I would say a half million, million.
Oh, and then for the courthouse, rough estimate?
Rough estimate, I wouldn't.
Over, under a million?
Yeah, well, the thing is, is it's got a clear space where the cubicles are and all you need is space for people to sit at that point. It's the security part of the courthouse that's going to be the issue. And I would imagine two fifty, half a million.
So.
You still couldn't build a, one building for that.
And how long do you think it would take to get it up to code to be able to move all of this stuff into?
Uh, the police department could move rather quickly. There's a few security items that have to be done. I would imagine four or five months.
So you guys would be able to get it up to code with all the cells and all those things within four to five?
No, moving the stuff would, would be four to five months. I'm not sure. I'd have to talk to Seth and a few others because I don't know anything about buildings.
The building itself is already up to code. But we would, the improvements that Chief Cuth wants to do would, is what the, the time factor would come into play.
What would we do with this building?
That would be a discussion. There are several ongoing with staff and we haven't come up with what could be done, but we're looking at different options.
What budgets has come out of?
It's come out of general reserve.
And would it all be like it's, is it like net out flat, like we would just deal? And would it all be, like, it's, is it, like, net out, flat, like, we would just do, like, the straight paycheck, like, check it out and, or write a check for it, and then that's it, or?
Yes.
We stretch it over time? And are we, is that, are we, can we clear that and no issues?
Yes.
I have a little bit of heartburn with this. You know, I've never, ever told you or the Fire Department, or Jimmy, no. I do have a little bit of heartburn with this price tag. I think this is something that we need to really sit down and talk about.
Yeah, that's why I'm just announcing that we can talk about it.
Okay, um... Yeah, I, I, that's another discussion that...
How much would it be to, like, build net new?
That building, like I said, a professional Police Department costs between five and seven hundred dollars a square foot times twenty-three thousand.
Would the city receive the generators, the emergency generators behind the buildings as well?
Yes.
Now, is the plan to move the Fire Department as well?
No, the Fire Department would move, uh, move to a new location with a new station being built.
Idea of location?
That is to be determined by the Fire Chief based upon call radiuses, so that they can maintain service levels.
When are we trying to do that one?
Um, that is a process that's already started as well.
How much does it cost on that one?
We don't know based, just because we don't have a design, so we have a RFQ out for design.
And where would that be located?
Again, we do not know. It's based upon call volume and call radiuses, and that would be determined based upon that, and with Chief Watkins.
So, we're looking at relocating Fire, City Hall and Police all, all within a small amount of time?
I wouldn't say it's a small amount of time. There's quite a bit of time that's gonna take place, just because the design of the station could take anywhere from nine months to a year to determine what the needs are of our Fire Department and what possible locations it can go to.
But just to be sure, this whole complex here will be something else, probably?
Well, possibly yes and possibly no. The new fire station could go here and then take over this location. Could also go to Wardnell Park. Kathleen Johnson is out of, out of the picture, and it could also possibly go, if we purchase this, over by J.B. Hunt Corporate. So, there are a lot of different things in play. We just don't have a definite answer until we get a better idea of what the Lowell Fire Department's needs are.
Chief, has there been any discussion on, I know right now you're centrally located, you just have the one office here.
Sure.
As command center. Has there been any discussion about splitting it from, from standpoint, I'm, I'm just thinking through tornado, storm. If something were to happen and we're all in one location?
Right.
How does that impact our ability to, you know?
Yeah, like, you know, over the years, we've discussed that, moving something to the south or something to the north, and we've also discussed, and County can help us with that, with some unified command, is basically, we would set up another outpost somewhere else other than east to west, but as it sits now, if a tornado came through, all of us would be, all these buildings would be wiped out.
That's why, and I guess that's where I'm just...
Yeah.
How to, you know, you have the ability to split things up a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely, we can have those discussions.
Is there, like, a, do you have a timeline of when we're wanting to, obviously, it's like ASAP, but is there, do we have a constraint of when we need to?
We, we really need to look at it for the next council meeting.
Before the next council meeting or at the next?
At the next council meeting.
How come all of us weren't provided this information that was just handed to me?
I didn't, I provided it to those who are here when I was here, so there are additional copies that'll be provided to the others.
I was here at six o'clock. It was not provided to me.
No, it wasn't.
So, yes, I, I mean, I, I was gonna talk to every one of you individually and see if you wanted to tour the buildings, so, obviously, some of you have already been there.
I was thinking about any other snakes falling from the ceiling.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's different.
If I could ask, what information are we referring to?
There's a packet of paperwork right over here.
There's packets of paperwork that...
There's copies of them that are sitting right over there for the rest of the council.
Okay. Yeah, it's just an announcement, it's just for you to take home and take a look at, and then we can discuss it later.
Any other questions for Chief Cuth on this? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I just found an, I had a question about the resolution. We just, am, am I able to ask a question, or is it too late?
Which resolution?
The one we just did, the Chris Collins one. Do we know, I know you said something about HR is coming on board soon, hopefully. Do you know if we have something in place, like training or anything, to help mitigate something like this from happening again? Because that's a lot of money to fall on taxpayers, and I wasn't, I had several people reach out to me about it and say that they weren't aware of it, so I was just curious if we had something, we were thinking of, some kind of, okay. Okay, cool, thank you.
Any further discussion? Our entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, I apologize. Can we schedule some work sessions, something about, about budget?
Yay, yes.
I don't know when you schedule those, or, I'm new to that, but what days of the week, or when you want to do it, or? I understand that we usually do two work sessions.
At least.
Okay.
I, I would request that we do at least Tuesday nights.
Okay.
That is the night that I have set aside, since I, I teach at night, I don't work during the day. It's, makes it pretty big a struggle for me to try to get off any other night without finding somebody to take over one of my classes.
Okay, are there two Tuesdays before next council meeting? One of them is a holiday, and one of them is considered an election day, but do we have any elections of any kind that Tuesday? So, that is free, okay? The following one is a holiday, but that doesn't, I mean, I, I mean, I'm available.
So, we're discussing work, work sessions for the AI and also, I guess, the buildings?
No, this is for budget.
Yeah. The next two Tuesdays, I mean, that's...
Twenty-eighth and the fourth?
I'm good with that, but is everybody else good with that?
What was the date?
Twenty-eighth and the fourth.
I know the twenty...
October and the fourth of November.
The twenty-eighth, I don't think it's gonna work. We have that little get-together to figure out what we're doing for the holiday stuff, so that night's gonna be booked for a couple of us, I know.
Oh, yeah, we had the Lowell Event Committee meeting.
Right, there's a Lowell Events Committee meeting on the twenty-eighth, from four-thirty to five-thirty.
So, if you're okay with doing it after that?
You mean, like, a five-thirty-ish?
Yeah.
On the fourth, I have our event meeting at five to six.
Yeah, it was the twenty...
On the twenty-eighth, we have it on a different day. On the, right.
We just did at the time of city council, so.
Yeah, the six-thirty.
Yeah, six-thirty on the twenty-eighth and the fourth.
I'm in with that.
Six-thirty both days.
There you go.
Six-thirty on the twenty-eighth and the fourth.
Just following those other meetings.
Take it.
Okay.
Okay. Take it while you can.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, since we have a motion and a second to adjourn, being no objections, meeting's adjourned at seven-twenty-nine.